Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council on this February 22nd. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Doer?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. At this point, I'd like to turn it over for a moment to Councilmember Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'd all rise, pledge your flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a moment of silence to keep in our hearts the destruction and the problems that they've had in the state of Texas over the last week, and I just hope that we can see better days for that particular community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Do you approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes, we have two sets. We'll start with January 25th, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Any comments?
Move to approve the January 25th regular meeting minutes?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January 25th meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is the minutes from the February 8th, 2021, regular meeting. Comments? Motion?
Move to approve the February 8th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 8th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Public hearing, PUD 06-3.
This is an application filed by Wallach Communities, 160 West Main Street, Suite 200, New Albany, Ohio, 43054. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of 114-unit, 94,000-square-foot assisted living memory care facility on 5.25 acres. The property is located at 2500 Grange Hall Road, further described as Book 1, Page 11, Parcel 67, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present tonight that would like to... Please come forward, give us a presentation. Give us a name and address first, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael DiCarloantonio. I'm the Vice President of Development for Wallach Communities. Wallach Communities is located at 160 West Main Street, New Albany, Ohio. As stated, Wallach Communities is here requesting approval of a specific site plan within our PUD 06-3, located at 2500 Grange Hall Road, south of Park Overlook Drive, for the construction of a 114-unit, 96,000-square-foot assisted living and memory care facility on approximately 5.25 acres. Wallach Communities is based in New Albany, Ohio, and it was founded in 1966 as a construction company. Today, Wallach is a vertically-integrated real estate company with development, construction, property management, and asset management business units. Over the years, Wallach has adapted to the changing housing needs of the Midwest, and we've been providing senior housing solutions for over 35 years. We own and operate eight senior living communities in Ohio, with another one that's under construction that should be complete in June 2021. We take a holistic approach to senior living. We incorporate our building design, services, activities, resident comfort, cost considerations that not only sustain but improve the life and approve the quality of life for our residents. The American population is aging at an unprecedented rate. By 2040, the senior population is expected to double. In the Beaver Creek area alone, there are approximately 13,000 individuals aged 75 and older, and as they age, they will seek living arrangements that provide high-quality services at a financially attainable price point and remain close to their friends, families, and loved ones. As stated, the Ashford of Beaver Creek is 114 units of assisted living and memory care, composed of 88 assisted living and 26 memory care units, 36 memory care beds. The project located within our PUD 06-3 is approved for senior living, and we believe it's the next logical phase for the PUD, with Beaver Creek Health and Rehab, a skilled nursing facility, and Homestead Village of Beaver Creek, an independent living community. This project meets the purpose and intent of the PUD by completing the continuum of care within it. With that, I can go ahead and turn it over to Sandra, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We may have some later. Good evening, Sandra.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. Before use an application requesting approval of a specific site plan to allow for the construction of an 88-unit and 36-bed memory care facility on approximately 5.25 acres within PUD 06-3. Property is located at 2500 Grange Hall Road, which is at the southeast corner of the intersection of Park Overlook Drive and Grange Hall Road. As you can see by the aerial, the 5.25 acres is located within PUD 06-3, and it is at the southwest corner of that PUD. The property, the 5.25 acres, currently contains a single-family home that's approximately 1,500 square feet, as well as a 900-square-foot accessory structure. Those properties were being used as a rental. They're currently now vacant. This is a photo that was recently taken of that property. So both of the buildings will be demolished as part of this application, and also located on the site is a detention pond that serves the entire PUD, and in the future, it will be expanded to accommodate the future development on this site. Also located on the site, you can see in the aerial, is some kind of scrub brush, some undergrowth, and then a few larger trees kind of scattered throughout the center of that property. As the applicant stated, the PUD was amended in 2017 to allow for assisted living facilities, independent living facilities, and memory care, so this application is consistent with the zoning for the PUD. So the proposed building is approximately 95,000 square feet and has two separate wings adjoined by a common area. The east wing is the three-story, 63,000-square-foot assisted living facility and consists of 88 units and is approximately 39 feet tall. The west wing is the one-story, 36-bed memory care unit, approximately 17 feet tall, and then the common area linking the two sides is 12,157 square feet, and that is where the main entrance is for the facility. So the building consists primarily of a hardy plank siding. They use shake siding as well as horizontal siding, and then board and batten vertical siding as well. As you can see by the renderings on the screen, they're using brick around the base of the single-story portion of the building, and then the three-story portion has significant portions of each elevation will consist of brick as well, and then the roof will be an asphalt shingle. So overall, the buildings do have a residential feel that we think complements the adjacent developments within the PUD, and then it also kind of blends very well with the residential developments that surround the PUD. As far as access goes, there will be one access point that will come off of the access drive just south of the roundabout on Park Overlook Drive, so that the access point is an entrance and an exit. They are showing a drive that goes all the way around the entire building, as well as sidewalk that goes around the entire building and then connects out to Park Overlook Drive. The applicant is providing 65 off-street parking spaces, including five handicap spaces, and that is the exact amount that they are required per the zoning code. As far as landscaping and screening goes, staff is pleased with the overall landscape plan. They are showing a significant number of trees along the south property line, which is the property line that abuts the single-family residential in the Spicer Heights neighborhood. That area is an area of focus for us to ensure that there is an adequate buffer. We did add a condition of approval into the motion that requires that the trees that are remaining in that area be preserved. What we want to do is make sure that, along with the significant landscaping that they're proposing to install, that the remainder of the trees that are there now stay. So when the Homestead project was put in, this same condition was added to that project. However, Green County Sanitary Engineering actually installed a line and did remove, you can see in this photo, a significant portion of the trees. Obviously, this photo is taken in the winter, so this area here is what we would like to keep in the meantime, just to kind of give a little bit of an extra buffer to the landscaping that's being proposed on the site. As far as the lighting goes, the attached lighting plan shows that the light poles will be limited to 16 feet since it is adjacent to a residential area, and then there'd be zero-foot candles at all property lines, and then a final lighting plan will be required before we release any zoning permits. And they are not proposing any wall signage at this time, however, they are proposing a ground sign, which is 31 square feet per side and 5 feet tall, which is consistent with the ground signs that were approved for Liberty Nursing and then Homestead as well within the PUD. And then just one additional condition of approval that we wanted to add in there to is for construction hours. We did limit the construction hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and that's for exterior work, so if there's any HVAC or plumbing or anything like that that could be done indoors, that isn't going to affect any of the neighbors, that is okay. But we did add that limit from Monday through Saturday, 7:00 to 7:00. And staff is recommending approval with 17 conditions in the attached motion, and if you have any questions, I can answer those following public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, we will accept any public input. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to give input on this application? Seeing none, we will move on, and we will go to council input. Would you like to start on the far end, Councilmember Bales?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Sandra, I did have one question, I think. The one entrance, did the fire department have any comment on whether that was acceptable or not?
Yeah, it was acceptable. They actually, I believe they made a comment just about, they actually adjusted the entrance so that the fire truck could get in there. It was a little more narrow, so other than that, they didn't have any comments on just having that one entrance.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the applicant for the investment in the community, as well as staff. I think there's a very good plan, so thank you all. I have three questions. This is on my running route, so I'm very familiar with this area, enjoy this area, thankful for the investment. Am I correct in assessing that the detention pond area will roughly double in size to the south?
To this...
Yeah, so it comes down here, because the existing one is...
Yes, the existing one is just in here now.
Because the property to the north does get a significant amount of water, anytime with rain, et cetera. Geese will flock there.
Yeah, and the property to the north, you can see their detention pond comes through...
And they have a very extensive, so I like the idea that it comes down. Just making sure I read that correctly, so thanks. Second question, any input from those on Ellsworth Drive, or from Homestead, or Beaver Creek Health and Rehab? Any input?
We did not have any input from Homestead or the formerly Liberty Nursing Center, I'm not sure what it's called now. We did have a letter that was sent to Planning Commission that I'm not sure if it was included in your packet, but the letter to Planning Commission, he, the property owner, had concerns about, there's a barbed or a wire fence that kind of goes through that existing vegetation, and he wanted to make sure that that was removed, and then also he wanted to make sure that the trees that had been downed from the tornado, any like remnant trees and branches and stuff, be removed as well, which the applicant has confirmed that both of those will be taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Third question is along the lines of Councilmember Bales, because I drive this a fair bit, and I think it all works. It is a bit tight, but the traffic circle in places is a hair uneven, so I'm thinking about, you know, fire truck turning or something that requires a wider area.
Yeah.
So just a little concerned as to the narrowness of that. There's not generally a ton of traffic there, so I think it works, but just something to maybe look at...
Yeah, the fire department has a template that actually has their biggest vehicle, and so they did use that template to ensure that the fire truck would be able to get in and out of the site without a problem.
Thank you for your work.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, thank you. I actually, again, on the same lines of the entrance, I was going to say, I appreciate the thought that went into putting it in this location as opposed to putting it off the main road of Grange Hall. I do also drive past this area quite often, and I know that it can get backed up just trying to get in and out of that area, so adding another entranceway would have been difficult. I also appreciate the thought that went into all the additional trees and the shrubbery in that line abutting that south part of the property, especially up against the residential area, and then I see too, it's hard to see on here, but in the drawing that was in our packet and also the one up here for everyone to see, there's a lot more over by Park Overlook Drive, so I think that's going to look nice as well. So appreciate the applicant working with staff and the city on some of those things. That's it for me.
Councilmember Schultz.
I just have one question. If you can, can you go to the next picture? Maybe the next one, the one that's similar to that. Is it that one? Next. Nope. No, no. Maybe it was back one. It doesn't matter. My question is, there is, in the drawing that I'm looking at, just like one or two cars that are parked behind. Is that employee parking, or is that intended to be any type of parking back there on the backside of the facility?
It's on that drawing right there.
Yes, sir. I am.
Yeah, so that location there is intended to be resident move-in, so that's where a truck would park, and we have the entrance, it closes to the elevator, the entrance for moving.
Perfect, so no one will be parked there permanently.
No one will park there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no other questions, sir.
All right. Councilmember Curran.
Already been addressed, Your Honor.
All right, very good. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor Adams.
I really liked the look of the building. I liked the drawings that you did. It's going to add a lot to that area, I think. It's very nicely done. My biggest concern was the trees, and you seem to address those in that southeast corner, especially where you'd see the residents, because that's the main concern I'd have, because, you know, I don't know what your hours of operation are as far as people coming to work, but sometimes early in the morning in the wintertime, it could be into somebody's front window or bedroom window. I want to make sure that was good, and it looks like you've addressed that really well, so I'm pleased, it looks good. I was a little concerned about that entrance, as it was brought up earlier, but you've addressed that, so I think we're, I'm good. Thank you.
Again, the roundabouts are designed so that fire trucks go over top of the roundabouts. You don't have to go around them. That's one of the reasons that they're designed the way they are. I know that that one has a little higher curb than the other one that's on down. That's just a matter of somebody, just a little different contractor that put that in, but the other part, one of the things I had, this was referred to once or twice as a Grange Hall address. This hopefully will not have a Grange Hall address, it will have a Park Overlook address. And the reason I say that, I don't want people going up and down Grange Hall looking for this. There's no entrance there on Grange Hall. I don't know what we have to do to make that happen. I'm assuming the post office can just change it.
Yeah, we'll take a look at our engineering departments in charge of assigning addresses.
I think it would be much more conclusive as to where you're going if it has a Park Overlook address, and of course, then people are going to turn on to Park Overlook and say, there we go. So if we could, at least look into that and see if we can't get an address other than Grange Hall.
Good idea.
And of course, now we're going to, we end up, is this facility going to be pure private pay, or is this a Medicaid facility?
We never like to kick residents out if they run out of money. We don't accept Medicaid off the street, but if they are with us for 12 months and they run out of assets, we do allow them to convert to Medicaid.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, that's very generous, I think, but it, because we do have a totally independent, and then this one's kind of in-between, and then we have the nursing facility and Medicaid facility right across the street, so we've got all the needs that anybody could need right there, close by, it looks like. All right. Well, I appreciate your efforts in building a nice facility in our community, so we look forward to it, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the final, before we move on? Okay, do I have a motion, and somebody needs to read this motion, please?
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of specific site plan for the Ashford of Beaver Creek on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per Section 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 17. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the specific site plan number five for PUD 06-3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Be kind to your neighbors down there, those residential neighbors, too. Don't harass them too much. I mean, any type of major construction is going to create a little havoc, just the way it is. Next, public hearing is PUD 20-2, specific site plan number one.
This is an application filed by Unison Industries, 2455 Dayton Zunea Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to approve for the construction of a 280,000-square-foot manufacturing facility on 53.783 acres. The property is located on the west side of I-675, north of Research Boulevard, further described as Book 2, Page 5, Parcel 2, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening representing the applicant? Please, come forward, give us a name and address, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Jeff Morse, 9575 Tahoe Drive, Centerville. I'm here as a chief manufacturing engineer, representing Unison Industries, wholly-owned subsidiary of GE Aviation. As was mentioned, our facility that we're looking to build and approve by you guys is a consolidation effort within eight different manufacturing locations that we're currently facilitating within Beaver Creek Township. What this does is gives us greater flexibility in terms of our product scope, as well as greatly reduces costs and makes us more competitive. We've been in the community for over 70 years. We anticipate being in the community another 70 years. This facility, as mentioned, is 280,000 square feet, 240 of which will be dedicated manufacturing, 40 will be office space within the facility. It will contain a full medical clinic, as well as a fitness center for our employees' benefits, as well as a technology center. So we manufacture gas and fluid handling systems for commercial and military jet engines, as well as aerodermivative engines, and this tech center will be also focus of new product introduction, new technology introduction in the manufacturing of those products. So I'll turn it over to Randy for a full breakdown.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor.
The case you have before you is the specific site plan number one for PUD 20-2, the Unison GE project. As was stated, applicant's looking to build a 280,000-square-foot structure on a little over 50, about 54 acres in Miami Valley Research Park. The project's located on the north side of Research Boulevard. It's just west of where Research Boulevard goes underneath 675. This is a closer view of that. It's kind of, it's an irregular-shaped lot, but it has, you know, about a quarter-mile or more of frontage on Research Boulevard, and then there's frontage on 675 and a little bit on 35 of the interchange, but obviously, those are limited access freeways, so there may be no direct access on that, but it does have the frontage on those freeways. To the west is Walnut Grove Country Club, to the south is some vacant property, and then the Greater Dayton Construction, and then to the east is 675. The project is still in the middle of a rezoning process. Actually, the 30-day referendum period ends tomorrow. Actually, I think it's Wednesday or this week sometime, and so technically, they can't apply for a zoning permit. If it's approved here this evening, they can't apply for a zoning permit until that 30-day period is over. But again, we don't really anticipate any referendums, but we're just obligated to wait those 30 days after a final approval, which was at the last city council meeting. Again, to the west is A-1, to the south is A-1 and I-1, and then there's I-1 across the highway. Seen here is the proposed site plan. This one's actually oriented so that north is on the left, so I have a different site plan here in a second, but I just at least wanted to show a colorized version of it. Where you can see the wet pond out in front of the building, and then there's a dry pond also out in front of the building. This is floodplain area, close along the road, but the building is set back over 570 feet from Research Boulevard, so there's a big area between the road and the building itself. This is kind of an easier one to view. This is where it's north and south, at least. Research Boulevard is down here. What they're proposing is to construct two access points, one where there's an existing curb cut in the median, and then they're also with this application proposing to construct another curb cut in the median and line that up with the access point to Greater Dayton Construction. Right now, Greater Dayton Construction doesn't have the ability to go west. In order to go west on a research, they have to turn east, go up to the U, and do a U-turn to go west, so with this project, it'll help Greater Dayton Construction as well. But they're proposing to have the main access for here on the eastern side, and then the secondary access for the trucks and such, where they can pull in, and actually, the trucks, I believe, on the east, so they can go around the building and then to the two loading areas on the east and west side of the building. They do meet the minimum parking requirements, and then some, they are over by about 100 parking spaces, but that's because the applicant stated that they have some overlap in shifts, and so they would anticipate, you know, 325 people to be there at a time, and that's what they're showing on their parking lot. So they didn't just create a big parking lot, just and have it half-full, so it's size just for what they need for this proposed project. To the north of the building, you can see this hashed area, and what they, that's a future expansion area, what they look, in the future, if they want to expand, they've got that pre-planned for another 210,000 square feet of building, so that would make it a 490,000-square-foot building. Even with that 490,000 square feet, you know, they do meet the minimum requirements for pervious service and impervious service, so there's no concern with too much coverage of the building and parking lot and the like. Just a condition, we did add a condition that the wet pond out here have a fountain or irrigation devices, because that's a significant body of water out there, and you don't want to see that get stagnant or covered with, if water remains stagnant, it gets covered with debris that's just not, it's unsightly, and so they've agreed to it, we just want to keep it in the motion for your consideration. And so they've agreed to it, we just want to keep it in the motion for your consideration. Also, uh, we know the general area and design of these curb cuts, but there is a condition that the final design, should this be approved by city council, that the engineer make sure that the final design be approved by our engineer so that they do meet ODOT standards and our standards for access points. They do show a landscape plan that has, that was me. Okay. They show, uh, uh, plenty of shade trees in the parking lot. Um, we did add a few conditions about having, adding landscaping out along the entrance access points. You can see this is North Oak Grumman also in Research Park. And we want, we're just looking at to have, um, some landscaping where it meets the, the access point meets the road. Um, so there's a condition to find a landscape plan to have that. Also, there's some transformers on the eastern end of the building. So we want to see them add some landscaping to help screen those. Again, it's, you know, we're 600 feet away from the road. So the visibility is going to be minimal, but we, you know, we want to make sure that, that there is something to help screen that and, and soften the look of those transformers out front. Uh, seen here is the proposed building. It's, uh, 45 feet tall on the, the manufacturing portion, which is the 240,000 square foot of the northern portion. And then it's a single-story, 25-foot-tall, um, office portion. The building is proposed to be constructed out of a white and beige colored tilt, tilt-up concrete and then have blue accent, which is part of the GE brand, their, their trademark accent color. And so have those accent stripes along, around the perimeter of the building. You can see this 3D rendering gives a better look on how that's going to look. Where this is the front southwest corner of the main entrance of the building and the office area. And then they show the, uh, the blue stripes in the, in the multicolored tilt-up concrete. We did add a condition that they can't paint or alter the building. This was a boilerplate condition that kind of arose out of where McDonald's painted their building without any, telling anybody, just, one day it changed colors on us, and we didn't know it was going to happen. So we add this condition to, uh, to most of the projects in the city. Uh, just to give you an idea of what the tilt, uh, the pre-cast tilt-up concrete panels look like and what the final product, you know, they can do a lot with it. They're, they're environmentally, um, they're good, they're good for insulation and sound and, and, uh, construction technique is good. So, you know, it's, it's a good product that, you know, you'll make a really strong and, and long-lasting building on the site. They do show some, uh, two 40-foot gas tanks along the eastern side of the property. These are the transformers that I was talking about earlier, where we'd have had landscaping along that parking lot area. But they show some 40-foot-tall argon-filled, uh, gas, that's for their manufacturing process. Uh, as well as a required, uh, water tank, that's for fire suppression needs. Uh, they show 300,000 on the, on the plans, but they actually said that they need 150,000. So it'll be half of what, uh, they originally had planned for. But that's, uh, that's, again, that's for, for their fire suppression needs. We did add conditions, uh, that the, um, the tanks be painted so that they blend in with the site, so they're not, they don't stand out. Uh, there's a caveat if they, if there's a requirement for the particular gas they put in it, there has to be a certain color, they can do that, obviously, if the federal government requires that. But, you know, our preference is that they stay painted white and match the surrounding building so that they don't stand out. Now, this is just to give you an idea, uh, this is about 675 is down here. So where there, those tanks and the transformers and the water tank. Again, uh, they show an expansion area on the north end of the building. And there's a proposed condition that that go through the minor modifications. Should they go through, as long as it's architecturally consistent with what they're proposing this evening. So it's a seamless transition and, and, and you wouldn't be able to tell the difference of what they're proposing with this application with, with a future expansion area. Uh, they're proposing one ground sign, which is to the southeast of the eastern access point. Northeast, sorry, northeast of the access point on the, on the, on the drive. We didn't have any other, um, designs on that, but we did add a condition that it'd be five feet, or maximum six feet tall and 60 square feet, which is standard for a manufacturing plant, particularly one of this size. Uh, in terms of wall signage, they showed 140 square foot medallion sign on their southern elevation. We, uh, 140 square foot, and we included language that allows up to 280, so they have some flexibility. We didn't want to limit it to just, if, if they wanted to have, you know, a, another product, where they put Unison down on the other end or something like that, we didn't want to limit it to just exactly what they're proposing. Just for an idea of a manufacturing building of this size, if it was in straight I-1 district, they'd be allowed up to 450 square feet of wall signage. So they're still well below what they would be allowed, um, should this, if this were straight I-2 zoning. There are 23 conditions in your motion for your consideration. Uh, planning commission recommended approval, recommends approval, they did at their last planning commission meeting. Staff recommends approval as well. And I'll be happy to answer questions following public hearing. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to, uh, get some comment on this application? Seeing none, we will move on to council input. And, uh, council member Curran, would you like to start so that everybody doesn't take your?
Thank you, your honor. Well, I just want to say, uh, congratulations and just, uh, very, very glad that Unison's staying in Beaver Creek, uh, on a consolidated site. And I'm so glad to see some of that research park land moving. And, uh, we've got a little bit more out there that, uh, we'd certainly, uh, like to, uh, have available for potential clients. Thank you.
You're welcome. Council member Schell.
I just have one question, Randy, I guess. Um, have we gotten any input from Walnut Grove? I know we asked this last time.
Uh, well, I, no, I never heard from them. You know, we, this is a part, this is the second part of the two-step process, so we never heard anything from the rezoning standpoint or the site plan standpoint. They do show, uh, there is a 100-foot buffer that was required as per the ordinance. And they, and I think that tree line's about 170 feet. So there's going to be a good, uh, separation between here and the golf course. Uh, that woods is staying, and they're going to have a eight-foot security fence around a good portion of the building. So there'd be a physical and a, and a, um, impenetrable boundary between the two.
I guess, the reason I question is because I see the dock is on that backside as well. And so I didn't know if there was any, I, obviously, I don't think we can anticipate when deliveries will come in or come out. Perhaps, sorry, Mr. Morris.
So our typical delivery hours are probably between 6:00 and 3:30 PM throughout the day.
Okay.
Um, there are some after-hours deliveries from time to time, but.
And then, how loud is the manufacturing process, like facility? Is it something that if you're standing outside or that could carry over into the golf course?
Um, so we have a singular dust collection system that may be slightly audible through the trees, but not, not overwhelming.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're not testing Jeddah.
Yeah. Thank you. Mayor, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thanks. Council member Garcia.
Hi, I'll have you come back up, because I have a question for you too, sorry. Uh, we didn't notice this in the packet, and it's probably not even a packet question, but I wanted to ask, do you know, is this, are these jobs that will, have already been in existence? Or would these be adding jobs to the community? And if so, how many jobs do you anticipate this will be adding?
So as it stands right now, we're running a first and third shift. And the current jobs that will occupy this building are transferring over from our existing facilities. Um, obviously, we're looking for the industry to spin back up, which will obviously give us opportunity to, to expand the opportunities within the, the facility and the workforce.
No, I appreciate the clarification there, thanks. And I second council member Curran's appreciation that you're utilizing some of the research park property and happy to have you in the city limits now.
Appreciate it.
Good.
That's it for me.
Council member Duer.
Simply thank you for your ongoing 70-plus-year investment in Beaver Creek and for many more. And to thank, uh, staff, there's a lot of meticulous work here that's gone into this, so thank you very much.
Council member Bay.
Thank you. Uh, again, thank you for, uh, locating in Beaver Creek, it's fantastic. I wanted to expand on councilwoman Garcia's question about employees. You'd mentioned the first and third shift. How many is that? Do you have an idea on how many people will be working there?
So total site will probably see approximately 400 employees in general. So that's a distributed between manufacturing personnel and some, and office personnel.
Fantastic. I wanted to thank you also for the thought of creating the, um, entrance across from Greater Dayton Construction. I think that makes a lot of sense, uh, not only for your operation, but for theirs. And I've always driven by there and imagined what kind of a pain it would be for Greater Dayton every time they, uh, need to go left. Um, the, the tilt-up concrete, can you, Rand, uh, can you put up this, the picture of the sign? It showed, or that one's fine. You know, that, that shows some, for lack of a better term, some decorative grooves in that tilt-up concrete. Is, is that how you envision that final design being?
By and large, part of it is due to the size of the panels that'll be constructed. I believe on the front are 12-foot wide panels. And then throughout the, uh, other three sides of the building are eight-foot wide panels. So by the time your, your joints would be exposed, there are, I believe there are beveled edges that would be at those mating surfaces that would create some of the visual cues you see there.
So both vertical and horizontal?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Looks pretty, pretty good. My next question is for you, Randy. There's 325 parking spaces, but I, I read only four EV spaces. Do we have any specific guidelines in our code that calls for EV charging stations for?
Yeah, there's nothing in our code that, um, you know, requires it right now. There's no percentage or anything, so, yeah, uh, anything that they did was on their own.
Right, right. I'm, I'm really glad to see that there's EV spaces. I, I go to work several days a week at a building with probably 100 parking spaces, and there are four EV spaces, and they're packed every day. So I wouldn't be surprised if those are really, um, sought out. And perhaps you might consider a few more. Anyway, I just didn't know if that was a part of the code or not.
Yeah, we don't have anything in our code yet about, um, you know, any kind of minimum requirements for EVs.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Vice Mayor Evans.
I have a couple of things. I, I was glad to hear that we're, the trees are going to stay for the golf course, because I think if we're talking 170 feet of trees there, I think we should be in pretty good shape. Uh, that shouldn't interfere at all. One of the things I brought up before was the, uh, 835 out there. If you're talking, how many trucks a day do, do you have delivery?
We're probably in the range of, call it 15 to 30, depending on.
Their semis and their?
Correct.
A lot of box trucks. The concern I have back there is, uh, and maybe Mike is the one to talk to you about this, but that road is not in great shape now. I'm hoping that, uh, there's going to be some changes to that because it's going to be in really bad shape if it's not.
Yeah, it's been resurfaced this year, uh, coming up. And so we will want to time, uh, not only resurfacing, but the, uh, uh, concrete work on the corners and stuff, that's going to be worked on because it's deteriorating. So this is something that will definitely encourage, uh, uh, timing of our contractor and when they're wanting to do the curb cut and everything as well, so.
Yeah, that was concerned, because with that many trucks, if we don't address that, uh, it's going to be a real problem. On the proposed extent, expansion, you're going to attach that to the existing building if it comes to that?
Correct.
So you'll put a road then back around it? For right now, the, that roundabout for your trucks goes right by.
That road would be able to expand beyond where the, yes. There's a good projection of it.
That's a walking path right now, right?
Sorry?
That's anticipated to be a walking path?
Part of it.
That's back there now? And you turn that into a, a road for the trucks?
Yes, so the reason the walking path is where it's at is we were trying to leave as many trees on the property as possible.
I understand, and I appreciate that.
So we're skirting that, so should the expansion occur? And obviously, we'd, we'd do some, uh, reevaluating of how to maintain that.
Overall, I, I, again, like everybody else, thank you for choosing Beaver Creek for this, uh, this home of all of your different departments, and you put them all in one place. And we appreciate the fact that you chose Beaver Creek to do that. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, again, it's, uh, it's always nice with a company like, of this stature and it's, and it's been here this long to see that they want to allow for expansion down in the future. So it's, uh, it certainly looks like it'll be home for many, many, many years. Uh, one thing that I was wondering about, we always like to, uh, you know, let people know the industries that are in our community. Are you considering, or would you consider a sign, a GE sign that faces 675?
So that has been in discussion to have, uh, potentially a monogram?
And so I think staff has left enough room in that requirement so that you could do that.
Correct.
And I think that would, uh, but anyway, I just, uh, hope that maybe someday you'll, you'll consider a sign that, uh, so everybody that goes through our lovely town knows that GE is here. Alright, that's all I have for now. Anyone else have anything for the good? Alright, would somebody like to read this motion?
I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for the Unison GE on the basis that city council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications. Amendments and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per section 155.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 23. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of the city council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the motion that was just read for PUD 20 dash two, specific site plan number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, sir. You only have three days, you gotta wait before you break ground, right? Alright, next, ordinance resolutions and PUDs. First is ordinance 21 dash 06.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021, and to amend ordinance 20 dash 33.
Thank you. Mr. Sarra.
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, mayor, members of, uh, city council. This is our first supplemental appropriation and certifying additional revenue for the year. Uh, again, when we do the budget, sometimes there's adjustments that occur slightly thereafter or as we're doing the budget, that, uh, just don't, uh, get picked up right away. But, uh, this is trying to, uh, clarify some of those to get them, uh, in compliance with, again, generally accepted accounting principles. The first one is, uh, the good news from a, another CARES grant. The golf course applied for one through the, uh, Ohio Department of Service Agency, uh, really related to the food and beverage side, the business permit and the, uh, business interruption of, of the food and beverage during the pandemic. They were worth $2,500 in January. Uh, so we have to, uh, certify that revenue and appropriate the expenditures for them to use that on, uh, the food and beverage side for, uh, uh, CARES mitigation costs. So, uh, again, uh, that came in after the budget in January. So, uh, we're thankful to the golf course for, uh, looking at that opportunity and taking advantage of it. So, uh, again, that's designed to, uh, get that in there so that they can use it to reimburse some of the costs that will go into, uh, getting the food and beverage, uh, system and the services back up and running. The second thing was the, uh, at the golf course, uh, during the budget process, we weren't exactly sure if we were going to lease the five pieces of equipment that maintenance department wanted. Uh, we finally got that squared away at the end of the year. And we had put in the, uh, the lease payments, what we estimated them to be. But, uh, general accounting principles indicate that we actually have to run the assets through the system and, uh, have the lease proceeds come in as the revenue. And then it's spend the entire amount, including the lease payments for future periods. So, uh, that's what, uh, the second item does, is brings in the total cost of 239,320 for the revenue for the lease proceeds. And then, uh, correspondingly, the appropriation to, uh, pay that. Again, if you recall, that's a, uh, five-year lease with a $1 buyout at the end of it, so. And, but the monthly payments, the lease payments that we estimated were already in the budget. It was just that this total amount coming in and out wasn't in there. Uh, the third thing is the drug enforcement fund. Uh, that fund, the revenue dwindles every year. And the expenditures, we've been using that pretty soundly every year to the tune of $8,000 or $9,000 for. We're running out of fund balance in there, and we had a budget in there to spend $12,000, but at the end of the year, the fund balance wasn't there, so we have to decrease the appropriation by $4,000 so that we have a positive fund balance theoretically at the beginning of the year. And then the last item is for the General Fund and Police Fund to appropriate the estimated cost of the property acquisition. And again, this was discussed at some of our previous work sessions in the past, and this basically appropriates that funding for, to accomplish that transaction, so be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Does somebody have a motion?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 21-06. May we have a roll call, please?
Tom from the Senate?
Yes.
Tom from the House?
Yes.
Tom from the Senate?
Yes.
Tom from the House?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Tom from the Senate?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 21-08.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a real estate purchase agreement with diverse ventures and Ohio General Partnership and West Bank Co. Bank, Inc., and a West Virginia corporation for the purchase of parcels of land, approximately 2.5 acres and 0.75 acres in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
And that be me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Again, this resolution authorizes the city manager to enter into this agreement, actually two agreements. As you can see, there's three parcels for one and one parcel for the other. One of the most difficult things we know in Beaver Creek, as everybody has found out as they come before you, is that land is at a premium, specifically difficult, specifically available land that meets visibility and central location needed for city services, especially police having that north, north, south, east and west directions, nearly located in the center of the city, just slightly north. We always say, I didn't know until Randy told me, El Toro's parking lot is virtually dead center of the city. So that's just, this is just south of that. How he knows that, I don't know, unless he spends a lot of time there. But that is dead center, so this is just slightly south of that. The purchase of the land secures the land and provides the city the greatest options for a future facility, a combination of a police station and City Hall, which are in severe need of replacement. A joint facility has been listed but unbudgeted in the city's capital improvement plan since 2019, and previously, other things have been done, other studies and other things budgeted, but for remodels which haven't been done. In 2016, a building assessment was completed for the police and City Hall buildings outlining the deficiencies from repairs and upgrades needed to inadequate space requirements. The cost of the upgrade, repair, and to bring into the ADA compliant and other building code compliances for both buildings, as well as to expand the much-needed space and reconfiguration of the police department, has been determined not to be a sound financial decision and certainly would not meet the long-term goals of the facility that would be needed. There are currently no architectural drawings or timeline for a potential facility. Again, the key here is to secure the land that meets the city's needs and provides the city with future options.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. You were finished, weren't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Taking questions?
All right, any discussion?
Badly needed. Badly needed. And we've got to act to acquire the land, and we'll see how it moves ahead here in the future, but this Beaver Creek's got to move ahead, and as the city manager said, land is a premium, so this is the right decision, in my opinion.
Did you have something?
I do, yeah. I, I agree, Councilman Curran, completely. And I just think it's important for our citizens to understand how the city funding works. And because we rely so heavily on property taxes, and we have, you know, three distinct property taxes, one for streets, one for police, one for parks, and each of those is like its own checking account, for lack of a better term. All the tax money that is collected for each of those comes in, and it can't be spent. Parks money can't be spent on streets, and streets money can't be spent on police, and et cetera, et cetera. And so I spoke about this over the weekend with a couple of citizens who were concerned, because we're going to, we're asking for support for our street levy this, this May, and I think it's very important to note that, you know, our, our police fund is paying a large portion of this, and our street fund cannot and will not be paying for any of it. So anyway, I thought it was just something I'd bring up and make it clear that, that a large portion of the funds that we're spending on this acquisition is all from the police fund.
And general fund.
And general fund, and, but not from our street fund, which we'll be asking for consideration in May.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
I just want to thank Chief Yerida for the information that you provided regarding the police building. I know when I was running for council, four, five years ago now, the first person I met with was then Chief Evers, and the first thing we did was discuss the needs of the police department. And it's, you know, it's a shame that it's taken so long for us to be able to really get this off the ground, but it's something that's desperately needed for our police, for our city, and so I'm glad we're able to at least acquire the property moving forward to see if there's something we can do to help out the law enforcement officers that help us out so greatly in our city. So thank you for the information.
Anyone else? Well, I just say that this is a little bit like the application we had from GE a little while ago to Plan Ahead, and they're planning for their future expansion. We know we're going to expand as well, and, and so we have to plan. And if you sit back and wait until you're ready to do it all at once, it becomes a difficult project, and you may not get the piece of land or the type of land that you really need. So we're trying to take advantage, little steps at a time, get some land acquired, and then we'll address the, our future when it's time. We did this once before, back about 20 years ago, for the public work building, and we have a wonderful facility down there, that we now have people that don't have to lay in the mud in the wintertime to work on the trucks. Well, we're not to that point with the police department, but we're, we're getting there. I mean, and it's just...
Just about.
It's, it's getting somewhat ridiculous in some ways, to where we have to do something. And so this is the first step, and we'll be talking to the public when we get ready to address the second step.
Right.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 21-07.
Second. Is it 07 or 08?
Oh, 08. I'm sorry. 21-08.
It says both here, but I mean, they just got confused. We're good. I have a motion. Did I get a second?
I seconded.
I got a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-08. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Now for the fun part of the year.
Yeah, I can't wait for this.
See how many times I can get tongue-tied on this process. And this is board and committee appointments.
Aye.
And we do this every year, in February. So this is the information we have on boards and commission applicants.
Okay. This is a... Okay. All right.
Are we ready?
Ready, Teddy.
I want to start.
Teddy, Mayor.
Okay, we are going to start the process, and we'll start with the planning commission. So I will first ask to motion to open nominations for planning commission.
I move to open nominations for a planning commission?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open nominations for planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. May I receive nominations, please?
Your Honor, I'd nominate Alex Height for the planning commission.
Second. No second.
No second yet. Any further nominations? May our nominations be closed?
I move to close nominations for planning commission?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Alex Height to the planning commission?
Second.
For, do I need the term?
It's okay. There's only one, so.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Alex Height to the planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. We didn't have to do the voting, because we only had the one nomination. Somebody was trying to read our lines here. Okay, we will move on to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move to open nomination for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Second.
Have a motion and a second to open nominations for Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Norm Estman.
Second. Don't have the second?
Any further nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Norm Estman to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Norm Estman to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Tax Incentive, and we have one vacancy there. Do I have a motion to open?
I move to open nominations for the Tax Incentive. Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Tax Incentive Review Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have nominations?
I move to nominate Carrie Martin to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Any further nominations?
Mr. Close nominations for the Tax Culture Board?
Second.
Tax Incentive Review Council.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Carrie Martin to the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Carrie Martin to the Tax Incentive Review Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next is Parks and Rec.
I move to open nomination for the Parks and Rec.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for Parks and Rec. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have three vacancies on this board, so I'll open for nominations, please.
I nominate Eric Corbett.
I nominate Sharon Fulcher. I nominate Christina Heaton.
Any other nominations?
I move to close nominations for the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations for Parks and Rec Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. All right, we have three vacancies, and we had three nominations, so we can make a motion to appoint those three individuals.
I move to appoint Eric Corbett, Sharon Fulcher, and Christina Heaton to the Parks and Recreation Culture Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Eric Corbett, Sharon Fulcher, and Christina Heaton to the Parks and Recreation Culture Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, bikeway and non-motorized transportation advisory committee.
I move to nominate, or move to open nominations for the Bike and Non-Motorized Transportation Committee?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations for the Bikeway and Transportation Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's one vacancy here. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Thomas Rawls.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close nominations for Bikeway and Non-Motorized Transportation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint Thomas Rawls to the Bikeway and Non-Motorized Transportation Committee?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Thomas Rawls to the Bikeway and Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is Tree Advisory Board.
I move to open nominations for the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have two vacancies. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Steve McLean. I nominate Stuart Moats.
Any other nominations?
Move to close nominations for Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do I have, we have two vacancies, two nominations. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint Steve McLean and Stuart Moats to the Tree Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Steve McLean and Stuart Moats to the Tree Advisory Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Youth Development Committee. Put everybody on there.
Move to open nominations for the Youth Development Committee?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nominations, please. And we can, again, this is a non-restricted group. We can put as few or as many as we wish, so it, nominations are open.
I move to nominate Debbie Albarico.
I nominate Jacob Christie.
I nominate Ashley Hall.
I nominate Chris Hadley.
I nominate Joseph Turner.
Well done. I screwed up.
Joseph Turner, okay. I said here, yep.
Who nominated Ashley Hall? I'm sorry, was it?
I did.
And who did Chris Hadley? I, I did. Sorry.
All right, I'm going to nominate Jennifer Hollow.
Hollow. And I nominate Turner.
Joseph Turner. Our name. We have another incumbent, Anna...
I nominate Anna.
Anna Merrick.
Anna Merrick.
Okay.
I nominate Colin Rust.
What was the name again? Colin Russ? So we got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
I also nominate Heather Vass.
What's that name again?
Yeah, we forgot Heather.
Heather?
Heather Vass.
Move to close nominations for the Youth Development Board.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. There are, it's up to you, do you, do you wish to appoint all these that were nominated, or do you wish to vote on some and appoint part of them?
Put them all.
Tell me what you want to do.
Move to appoint all nominations?
Put them all.
2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine nominations. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine nominations. So I have a motion to appoint these nine nominees. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to make nine appointments to the Youth Development Committee, as nominated here tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Alright, is there anybody left? Personnel.
Personnel, this needs board.
We have one vacancy.
Move to open nominations for the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion to open nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Do I hear nominations?
I nominate Joyce Carter.
Move to close nomination for the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I move to appoint Joyce Carter to the Personnel Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Joyce Carter to the Personnel Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. I don't think we've ever done this this smoothly in this, in the history of me being here in this county. So thank you, thank you. Alright, council time. We'll just start in the middle this time, or sort of, a little bit different. Councilmember Doer, would you like to kick it off?
Please, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two points for me this evening. First, I'd like to thank Mike Thonero and the entire crew for the snow removal. It was a heavy, heavy mountain of snow, especially for this area. There are many people that worked tirelessly throughout that time, so I'd like to say a hearty thank you to everyone. The second item is that the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce is putting forth a new social media campaign, a picture with Bee the Beaver. It's a stuffed beaver. Uh, and it's a great way to promote local businesses and to get a picture taken with a cute stuffed animal. I need to get one for my kids and so. But I think it's a really good idea to generate awareness for local businesses and to continue to help out there. That's all for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd love to just say thank you to all the citizens who put their name in the hat to volunteer for these boards. I think there were thirty citizens, if I'm not mistaken, who, who chose to come out and volunteer and serve, so I appreciate it. For those of you who, who were not chosen, which aren't that many, I would encourage you to continue to serve our community in some way, and we're always looking for other volunteers.
Absolutely.
Um, I attended the Beaver Creek Golf Club Advisory Board meeting last week, and they are creating a policy for the city manager's consideration on when, when they close due to inclement weather, which is something new they haven't actually put down in writing. And so, uh, I thought that was a good thing for them to do and also to publicize ways they're gonna let the community know that they're closed and so forth. Due to snow or rain or whatever it might be. Uh, they did delay their driving range improvement project because of the snow and the, the length of time that the snow's been on the ground here, so we look for that to happen sometime in March. Uh, I too would like to thank the Public Works Department for all of their snow removal these last few weeks. It's been fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll follow up with similar comments. Thank you to our staff and city workers for the snow removal. Uh, and also too, thanks to the residents who reached out to us with questions as to the process. I appreciate the opportunity to allow staff to explain how this process works and where there's some complications or confusions this year driven by some issues with salt delivery. Uh, but thank you for the residents who reached out. Councilmember Kern and I are actually going to attend one of the Homeowners Association meetings tomorrow evening to follow up with residents to get more of their questions and explain the process a little bit more in detail. Uh, so keep the questions coming. We appreciate the opportunity to explain how the city operates a little bit more fully to everybody. And thanks to everyone who kept us safe last week.
Councilmember Schultz?
I also would just like to echo some of my fellow council members. Thank you to all the volunteers for the board. Sincerely, I think that this group of applicants was very highly qualified. It's one of the most qualified I think we've seen, very in-depth packages. So we appreciate all the time and effort that you put into your packages, and we look forward to you serving. Um, as Councilmember Bales said, if you were one of the ones that weren't selected, we do encourage you to keep applying because the city needs to hear the voice of its citizens, and what better way than to participate on our board? So very much appreciate that. Also would like to echo our thanks to the road crews. Um, having a father who does road clearing, he was very, very busy working many, many shifts. And so I know that our fellow road crew members here were doing the same, so I just want to say thank you, and hopefully you are getting some rest this week. Two other things I wanted to mention, the Beaver Creek Men's Volleyball Team is actually having a fundraiser tomorrow at Kane's on Indian Ripple. So if you are in the mood for some chicken and you'd like to support the men's volleyball team, you can stop out there. Additionally, the Beaver Creek Dance Team is also having a fundraiser, and they are selling raffle tickets for a Louis Vuitton bag. So for all of you who may be interested in that, or husbands who may be interested in perhaps getting your wife a nice gift, you should enter into their raffle. Um, you can do that by going to dance.bevercreekmusic.org. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kern?
Yes, Your Honor, again, I'd echo my fellow council members' comments concerning the quality of the candidates that we had, which is just out of sight. And encourage people to continue to apply if you didn't have that opportunity to be selected this time. And want to thank Public Works for the great job they've done in terms of the snow and all the challenges surrounding that. Also to mention, senior citizens have another drive-through this Saturday, nine to eleven. It's five bucks apiece. And would encourage people, if you haven't signed up for that, why call Senior Citizen Center to get a bag for, for Saturday. Thank you.
Very good. Flash Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I too, as everyone else has said here, I want to thank the people that signed up for the boards and commissions. It's, I can't think of a better thing to do than to step up and volunteer to help your city. Uh, it's just, it's our home, it's where we live, and being a part of it is really, to me, a great opportunity, and I really value that opportunity. Uh, also wanted to thank the road crew. Uh, they did an outstanding job. I know they worked a lot of hours. I saw some of these guys out there just dragging, driving their trucks. And I tried to keep the roads open and safe, and I know we couldn't address them all as quickly as some people we wanted. Uh, but we don't usually get this many snow events in this short a period of time with this much cold weather and the salt not being available as it should be. So, uh, I appreciate everyone that I talked with this week or that emailed me sent, you know, called me about that. Uh, I hope we explained it to you, but, uh, I know those guys did the best job that they could with what they had. Uh, they, they're very proud of what they do, and they want to keep those streets safe for all the residents of Beaver Creek. Also want to thank a lot of the different organizations within the city that stepped up and offered them food. I know, uh, a couple churches gave them sandwiches and things like that, so that was, that was certainly appreciated, and I know they appreciated that. Uh, last thing I wanted to say is happy birthday, another happy birthday to Councilwoman Schwartz. So.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And I will second everything that's been said, all great comments. I have two items I'd like to add, and that is, one is Saturday, for anybody that wants to join me, is the tenth year that Green Bucks slash AmBucks is having their event at the mall where they, they provide specialized tricycles to, uh, special needs children and to disabled veterans. And it is an event, if you've not been able to attend, it is an event that is quite inspiring to watch and to be part of. So I invite you all, it's eleven o'clock on Saturday out at our Beaver Creek Fairfield Commons Mall. And, uh, but it is, I never miss it. Even when I wasn't the mayor, I never missed it. It's, uh, it's just that inspiring that it's something I like being part of. The other thing that I want to add is, uh, the Mayor's and Ohio Mayor's Alliance, which was formed in two thousand sixteen. Uh, I am now a, one of the committee members for the, uh, uh, Mayor's and Police Chiefs Leadership Committee. And this is a committee that's just been established, and there are six police chiefs and six mayors uh, that, uh, will start meeting on a regular basis to, to see how we interact with our, in different cities throughout the state. And, uh, so how the police and the citizens interact, how their governments interact with the police and the citizens. And, uh, so to try to learn from each other, and, uh, we'll see what comes out of it. But it, uh, it's something, one of the committees that I thought would be, I might be able to contribute a little bit in. So that will start, actually, I have my first Zoom meeting this week on that, and, uh, we're gonna have meetings, at least initially, mostly with Zoom, but, uh, they'll be pretty regular. So I'll keep you posted on those. So with that, we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we, over the weekend, uh, you know, resources were stressed, to say the least. Uh, so I've asked the Director of Public Administrative Services, Mike Thonero, to come and, uh, address council and address residents. I know we, uh, one of the things I, I did, uh, did want to mention is, uh, our communication model best is, it seems to be through Facebook. Um, I wanted to stress something that, uh, residents found out today uh, through emails, and they're very appreciative. I think they fall down literally sometimes when, uh, they get an email within no time responding back to them. I, I just don't, I don't, they don't believe it almost, that the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, uh, you know, other staff members are responding back to their, uh, needs so quickly. I did get a very much thank you. I, I appreciate that. Uh, but one of the things that today was mentioned was, uh, they didn't realize that Facebook was, you know, was a main thing. We got a ton of hits, a ton of likes, a ton of new follows. But what I wanted to stress there is that you do not have to be signed up on Facebook. So hear me clearly, it, it doesn't matter. If you don't have Facebook, that's okay. You can still follow the information on the page. Uh, so Beaver Creek Facebook page, I think it's called Beaver Creek City Hall, uh, Facebook page, uh, you can go and go there. Actually, if you go to our website, bevercreekohio.gov, where you see the logo of Facebook, you can click on that, and that'll take you to our page. Again, you don't have to sign on. Uh, it won't let you comment and like things if you're not signed on, but if you just want the information like what we did. I think within three days, we did updates, uh, to the residents, three different updates on what was happening with the road conditions. Uh, so that was very important information to follow. So I just wanted to throw that out. But I'm asking Mike to come forward and explain a little bit of the process, and take away. Mike, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Happy to be before you this evening. Uh, as the city manager said, our, our goal is to try and be as transparent in the process as we possibly can and try and educate folks as to what's going on with our roadways, particularly during a, a snow event. So it's been a little while since we've kind of talked through this progression, so we thought it would be a good opportunity for, um, us to have an opportunity to share with the public some of the things and some of the things that we look at as we're looking at snow events. And then we'll kind of dissect, uh, an example, one, one recent event, our President's Day event, to kind of talk through that so that both City Council and the residents at home who are watching have an understanding of why we're doing what we're doing. Uh, the first thing we wanted to highlight is, is what our actual goal is. Uh, when we outlay our snow plan each year, this is our goal, safe passage for, for residents and commuters to be able to get places safely uh, while providing the best conditions possible and being both environmentally and fiscally responsible. That's, that's our goal. That's how we kind of outline, outlay this, uh, process. Different conditions require different events. Uh, sometimes we're pre-treating, uh, putting those lines down on the road depending upon the weather conditions or depending upon what winter event is actually coming. Uh, sometimes we're preparing for ice events or kind of a sleet event. It's usually an event where there's not any snow, but there's just ice. Uh, sometimes we're preparing for snow with minor accumulation. We consider minor accumulation less than two inches. And sometimes we end up with significant events with accumulation greater than two inches. Uh, finally, and as was the, the case most recently, uh, you can have compounding events. So we may have several events in a row, one right after another, and certainly that requires another set of actions as well. Uh, we prioritize our roadways in different ways, and I've just provided some examples so that, uh, folks at home could kind of get a feel when we talk about these designations for roadways. We, uh, kind of put these roads in a priority, starting with the most important, our expressways or freeways. Uh, residents in our community would think about that as like thirty-five. Uh, then we start to look at principal arterial roads, examples are North Fairfield, Indian Ripple, Dayton Xenia. And then start to move through major arterials like Alpha Bel Brook and Haynes, uh, down to commercial collectors. We've given the example of Beaver View and CJ Drive, uh, and then down to residential collector streets. Those are, um, residential streets, but, um, start to have a little bit more higher traffic count. So examples of those would be like Lakeview or Patterson. And then finally, we get into residential or neighborhood streets. And I want to be clear that while it's snowing, we're addressing the freeway, the principal arterials, the major arterials, commercial, residential collectors. If we can get to them, and then after it stops snowing, and only after it stops snowing, will we start to get into the residential or the neighborhoods. So, um, why do we do it that way? You know, what, what is our process? Why is that kind of established? Uh, our focus is on the main roads first and then move through that progression. Bless you. So that we have the opportunity to address roadways with the highest volumes and highest speeds first. Uh, addressing neighborhood streets that have less traffic and lower speeds provides, hopefully, a safer condition and allowing us to address those primary roads first, higher speeds, more traffic, serving the greatest number of people. So that's kind of why we move through our progression the way that we do. Uh, a little bit of, about our Public Service Department, kind of by the numbers. Uh, we are the second largest city in the region, only second to Dayton with a little less than six hundred lane miles of roadway and about twenty-seven point seven square miles. Uh, we are a large community. Uh, when we talk about those routes and the kind of the progression that we move through, we have nine main road routes that we address first. Uh, and then eighteen different neighborhood routes. Uh, we have eighteen frontline trucks, which, uh, works to our advantage. Um, and then, uh, an average storm, we're using about four hundred tons of salt. Our staffing level has stayed the same, or stagnant for the last twenty years. Uh, the average storm uses, average storms are funny things, so when we start to talk about those averages, of course, everyone realizes that that means that we have storms that are upward of four hundred, and of course, we have storms that are less than four hundred so that we end up with that total. Uh, just for example, we've had storms this year that have almost come up to a thousand tons, so, uh, storms can vary greatly. This is like death by PowerPoint. It is like the worst slide that anyone can ever stick up in the, in the entire world. Uh, but we wanted to kind of provide that little bit of framework that, that I just provided. That's the general operation, how, how we operate. Um, I, I sent the slide over to the city manager, and he's like, wow, that's a lot of information, Mike. Uh, but I just kind of wanted to talk through so that residents could kind of see how that, um, plays out and, and what that looks like. And again, the goal is just to try and provide additional information so that people understand what we're doing when we're doing it. Uh, so we highlighted the President's Day event. Uh, we had several events prior to this event. We had treated several events prior, and our staff had been in, uh, addressing salt and plowing and, uh, of course, an, an impact on our staff. Um, so we ended up with a compounding event for that President's Day event with future predicted events in the future. So at that time, we were anticipating additional snow. Uh, we had salt delivery that was, uh, missed due to some supplier issues. It was missed on Monday. Uh, we did bring staff in on Saturday to receive salt because we were notified that if we could bring staff in, that they would bring it to us. So we were able to accept, accept some salt on Saturday. Uh, knowing that we had an upcoming event, we split shifts, uh, so we divided our crews into sixteen-hour shifts, which is a, a long haul. That's, uh, two traditional workdays for, for most people. Um, one thing I'll highlight about a sixteen-hour shift, that, that means you have eight hours off, but one of the challenges our staff feels is that when, when you go home, you can't just go right to sleep. Uh, you've got to say hello to your children, you've got to get something to eat, uh, wind down just a little bit, and then you shut down and try and get some sleep. And then you've got to set that alarm, get ready to go to work, shower, and then of course, your commute time back in. So it really does take a toll on our staff, uh, but we like that sixteen-hour shift because we get some overlapping schedules and get some, some multipliers in force. So, uh, in this particular event, it snowed till around eleven AM on Tuesday. Uh, main roads were cleared. Uh, we cleared main roads and cleared the entrances to the main, uh, neighborhood streets and anything coming out to an arterial, arterial collector because we realized it was going to be hard to get into the plats. Uh, we entered the neighborhoods around Tuesday. We entered the neighborhoods around Tuesday afternoon. At that point, it was clear that we had cold temperatures coming, and our supply for salt was short. Next unknown delivery was unknown, and we decided not to salt neighborhoods and use salt sparingly. We completed clearing the neighborhood roads by early Wednesday morning without salt, so a lot of folks saw plow happen. Of course, it just skimmed off the top and wasn't all the way down to black, and a lot of times, folks have the impression that if you're not all the way down to the asphalt, that the plow didn't come through, because that's been the standard that we normally provide here in this community. We touched up and cleaned up the neighborhood roads, started to address some mailboxes. We do, if residents have mailboxes that are impacted, we'll provide a temporary mailbox for them, so that they can get that continued mail service, and then eventually, we fix them once that all comes down. Wednesday evening, we got called in for the next compounding event again, and had a future predicted event over the weekend again. Thursday, we got some salt, so we were able to get into the neighborhoods, salt. At that point, it was pretty hard-packed. Again, we could plow over the top, skim off the top, throw the salt down, and once that salt started to work, it started to really slush up. But again, it gives that impression that because we couldn't get all the way down to the asphalt, that we hadn't plowed at all. So after that, we ended up back in the neighborhoods again on Friday, plowing and salting for a third time, and we're looking ahead a little bit for a potential future event that Sunday. When we left on Friday, we saw that there was possibility for ice, or rain, or snow, and thankfully, it turned out to be rain. But those are just some of the things that we're starting to look at as we're looking ahead. And then today, we're back in the neighborhoods, touching things up, plowing again, and repairing potholes, mailboxes, and going back and answering any questions, and responding to any complaints that we may have received again and addressing those. So that's kind of what it looks like. So the plan was kind of the front side of it, and then one event, the most recent event kind of was, I thought, helpful to go through to kind of explain what's happening and provide that transparency. Again, thanks to City Manager and City Council for all of your support. It is really appreciated, the staff certainly appreciates it. I want to thank the residents, too. We received lots of kind words and compliments, and some thank yous along the way, as far as some food and kind words. We also received some comments that we could do some things better, and we want to learn from those and try and get better, so we listen to those comments as well. Finally, I wanted to thank our public service team as a whole. I'm very proud of the work that they did, our frontline staff that answers all the questions, our administrative team helps put the plan together, and then the guys out front in the plows. If I could, Mayor, I'd like to just add one more thank you, if I could. Thank you to you all for all that help and all the support, allowing us to do what we do. Thank you for that. And then the last thank you is, you know, life still goes on for these guys, their spouses, their families, they also give a lot during these long 16-hour stents. There's still doctor's appointments, there's still activities that kids need to go to, and that does put a heavy burden on the rest of their family as well, as they're putting in all those hours here. So I'd like to again thank the residents for their support, thank City Council and the public and public service team. Happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and if there's not, I'll go ahead and turn over the rest of the report back to the City Manager.
Thanks, Mike, and spring's right around the corner.
Right. We're excited to be cutting grass, I can tell you that.
I will say that, thank you, Mike. I will say that, you know, he mentioned 18 frontline trucks. Keep in mind, we basically have 21 operators. We had one on surgery, so we had 20 crew members. And, you know, the day or two before the major event, you know, we quickly, quickly forget about overnight, when we have an inch, or sleet, or rain, that our guys get called in, and they're out all night and didn't work all day. Well, that happened like two days in a row before the major event. Then comes a major event, and you said, "Okay, guys, you guys ready to get out there?" And their response is, "We've been out there, we're already exhausted." You know, it's a good thing that, hey, when that inch or two inches happened overnight, that everybody's oblivious that it really happened, because we took care of the roads for them. But when a major event comes, and that's when unusually, like this happens, we had to split into the two crews. And when we had to split into the two crews, remember those 18 trucks? Well, if you, in our instance, we had 20 crew members, you split 20 into 16-hour shifts, how many do you have? You have 10. So you have 18 trucks and only 10 crew members. So we don't have the staffing, is what I'm trying to say. When we go from seven to three, basically, we're 100% staffed, and then you have a crew that stays over eight hours, and then a crew, they stay till 11, then you have a crew that comes in 11 and stays till seven, and then they stay the eight additional hours. That's how those 16 hours, with the eight hours in the middle of the day overlapping. So during the middle of the day overlapping, we have full force of the 18 trucks we're running, but during the night, overnight time period, you're only partially, you know, you're probably 60% staffed at that point in time. Normally, this isn't, you know, when we have a one snow event and out and gone, our crews stay on it, and some guys we see have 24 hours straight or more. And it's a safety issue, so when they've already been out there 20 hours or so, and then the major events happen, we had to make a hard decision that, okay, we need to break into crews. And this is the first time we've actually did it. They had to have several, I would say, emergency meetings to figure out how they were going to tackle this. And so part of that, just keep in mind, same staffing with the growth of the city, growth of roads, growth of traffic, same staffing level since, for about 20 years. And also keep in mind that the levy increases that we have had in the past for additional streets have went into capital, not into staffing. So it's went in, not into additional staffing, but additional asphalt, additional projects. So just wanted to point that out, that's what kind of really happens, and then on top of that, causing us a little bit of a delay into getting into the neighborhoods, because you're not fully staffed the entire time, but then to find out, when we're getting ready to go into the neighborhoods, we have no salt, or very sparingly, that just was an insult to injury already. But I'm really proud of the job the guys, the crews did, outstanding. They worked hard, and I can just communicate to the residents that they care about what they do. They really care about what they do. They love what they do. Probably not so much working 60, 80, 100 hours in a week, care at the end about as much, they're tired and wore out. So they needed some deserved rest over the weekend, and this morning, they went out starting to do the mailboxes and cleaning up any piles that were pushed in the wrong area. Please contact Public Services if you have any other questions, we'll be glad to address the issues from them. But thank you for giving us that opportunity. Now, moving on real quick, the inclement weather that we had, the tree trimming along US 35 had to be delayed, was canceled last week or so. So now it's February 22nd, starting today through March 5th, that they will be doing the tree trimming along US 35. So please be very aware of that, as we already know how that traffic stops and starts quickly through there. COVID-19 vaccination update, just wanted everybody to be aware that the Green County Public Health has stopped the accepting registrations, because they're going to transition over to a centralized scheduling system with Governor Dewine and the state. It's anticipated that it'd be, take less than two weeks. Works with the state to merge these existing systems now into one. Once we get that information, where it is, we'll post it out there for all to be able to see. And again, it would just congratulate Mayor Stone. This is important, that we are one of the largest cities, the 22nd largest city in Ohio, and we need to be at the table when these discussions are happening. It's vital that we have representation, so congratulations, Mayor Stone, to be appointed to that. He'll serve well and be able to keep us in the loop of, you know, what's happening, and have a very important input, again, that we need to have as a city. And Mike, you are back. We, I wanted Mr. Thonero to present this, he actually has the hard copy here, the actual award.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, happy to be before you. This is really exciting. This is not something that we applied for, so I wanted to congratulate you for your support on allowing staff to do these things, allowing us to get out and try and do some of these things that are a little bit different. You know, it's really fitting that tonight, we talked about our boards and commissions, because our park board, as well as our tree board, were really instrumental in this trail. The park board, of course, helped set the vision for staff as part of the Park Master Plan, and our tree advisory board actually did some of the clearing and coordinating of volunteers and tree identification along this trail along the way. So to receive a Gold Leaf Award that was, we were nominated by the Ohio Chapter of the ISA, the International Society for Aboriculture, is a true honor, and we're very proud of this, it'll be proudly displayed down at our Public Service Building. But I just wanted to thank you guys again for appointing those volunteers and allowing staff the opportunity to pursue some things like this. It's really exciting. The trail was named after Pat Tilt, who was the first city arborist who has passed away since, but we're really excited, we're really thankful for all the volunteers and all the work that was done out there. We're very, very thankful for this Gold Leaf Award. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank the staff. I mean, they, they're the ones that stay in touch with what's going on, and you mentioned it several times, thanking our volunteers that get out there and actually do the clearing and what have you with the direction of staff, so it's a group effort, it really is.
And lastly, Mayor, yeah, please get out to the Fox Run. Once the snow recovers, we're supposed to have some gravel parking out there eventually. I don't think that got done last fall.
This year.
Yeah, this year still, then, it was on to be last year, but had a few delays, you know how that is. But there'll be, actually be some gravel parking, I think, up to maybe nine cars or something be able to be parked there. It's a beautiful trail, there's a wide opening area, I think in the future, we're going to expand it to have picnic table, picnic areas. It's a great place, so check it out. Lastly, I just wanted, something we haven't discussed yet, on our website is about the street levy renewal that's on in the May. This is a renewal, no tax increase, the city will not receive a dime more revenue. You know, as the appraisals came and reappraisals came, the city, even if the average appraisal in Beaver Creek raised 100% of everybody's home values, let's just pretend, everybody's nightmare unless you're selling, right? But let's pretend it did, the city receives the exact same dollar for a levy, so it doesn't matter. The appraisals do not impact the city's revenue, it's still, I think the street levy will collect around four and a half million dollars, so it will still continue to collect four and a half million dollars. But the information's out there, one of the things I would point out is that this is where your major public services staffing is funded. 37 employees are funded out of here. Without this funding, we have no snowplow drivers, we have no asphalt workers, we have no street workers. This is the main operating that funds 76% of the entire street budget, and the rest of it's really capital. So just want to, it's out there for everybody to review the information, that's coming up in May, and I'm sure we'll do more presentations as time allows. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if there's anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue, you're welcome to do so now. Please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on the agenda, and the next item on the agenda is executive session.
I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiate.
Have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Vales?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. And there will be no action taken at the end of the executive session, so this will conclude the on-the-air meeting. So with that said, do we need a five-minute break, or we want to go straight in? All right, let's get into executive session, please.